Welcome to the January Board of Education meeting. It's great, great to see and hear everybody out there today. We're going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me. All right, well, Marissa, we do have a full quorum present tonight. And we've got some exciting presentations coming here shortly. But we're going to start off tonight. We appreciate the Rogers Lowell Chamber of Commerce reception that we had before tonight's meeting. And I'd like to have Mike Power come forward. Mike serves as Board Chairman of the Rogers Lowell Chamber. So.
And we would like to just mention that's not a central office person crying right now.
Yeah. Thank you, Nathan.
Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be at tonight's event. We especially want to thank the elected school board, school administrators, staff, for the commitment and effort they give to our community. They deserve a round of applause. Chamber salutes the positive impact each of you have on our community. We have so much to be proud of, including we have seen tremendous job growth in Rogers with over 1,300 jobs created in 2022. There are over 60 large-scale development projects valued at over $200 million under construction in Rogers right now. Staff from the Economic Development and Government Affairs Divisions of the Chamber toured state and federal legislatures through Rogers Learning Center at Rogers Heritage High School to learn about current program offerings, expansion plans, enrollment limitations, and legislative solutions for existing career development programs. The Chamber is partnering with Be Pro, Be Proud to host Draft Day NWA in the spring. Draft Day will provide skill assessments and guaranteed interviews for in-demand and high-paying careers for graduating seniors. Over 4,000 Rogers and Springdale students have already registered to attend. The Chamber visit Rogers Embassy Suites and Child Care Aware hosted educators from seven different Rogers schools and 230 students showcasing hospitality and early childhood education careers as part of two events of the Chamber's kindergarten to jobs or K-2-J program. Additional industries such as manufacturing, construction, and medical fields are in the process of doing this in 2023. The Chamber has made a concerted effort to engage all members of our community and have begun and continue to implement programs dedicated to making our communities as inclusive and welcoming as possible for current and future residents. On behalf of the Rogers Lowell Chamber, we thank you all for what you have done and for the future plans you have in place for the Rogers Public Schools. Going forward, the Chamber will strive to be a good partner and to share the perspectives of our business members with you. We will continue to encourage our Chamber members to stay involved, in and informed, so we can share what we learn with others, as we will encourage our members to engage, to volunteer, and to be a part of the support system for you. Please join me in recognizing the sponsors who helped us promote the involvement of the Chamber in local government and schools this event. Knapp Holt Construction is our presenting sponsor. Gold sponsors are Arkansas Blue Cross Blue Shield, Garber Engineering, GRO Catering, which is Golden Corral, Height Jackson and Associates. Silver sponsors Pop Diggity Gourmet Popcorn, and the signed sponsor is Minuteman Press. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to do this for the school system.
Thank you, Mike, for those comments. And we appreciate the longtime relationship that the district has had with our Chamber. And it's not a long time with that guy beside you there, Raymond Burns. And we appreciate he and his team. So I thank y'all for being here. And at this point, we've got a few more presentations. Dr. Perry, I'll turn it to you.
Mr. President, thank you. And again, just to echo, the Chamber has been the most productive, most partner-oriented chamber that I've ever worked with. And so we certainly do appreciate everything that they do to make our school district successful. We've got a couple of things that we're going to do this afternoon. But before we move forward with our school recognitions, we would like to just say thank you to our board members. I think that right now, more than any other time, it is hard to be a public servant. You've got to make some difficult decisions. There's always those financial problems. Everybody wants more than what we can financially do, the social issues that are out there, the political issues about curriculum, and whether it's during the pandemic or some of those issues that came up, and then just educating our students. So we know that there's a ton of issues and a ton of things that you have to deal with. And I don't know that if anybody really takes the time to say thank you. But this evening, with everything that the school brought out and gave to you, we just do want you to know, we do appreciate you. And we also would like you to know the importance of what you've done. I've been in this business now 36 years, and I can tell you that effective school board members and doing the right kind of things make a huge difference in a school district. And this is a great board. So ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join with me as we recognize our school board and for all the things that they do for us, thank you. At this time, we're going to ask Ms. Reeves to come forward, and she has a group of students that is going to showcase their talents. And it works out doubly well for us this evening because not only do we get to see our students perform, but they also have a song specifically designed for the school board during this evening. So, Ms. Reeves, we will turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you. And this is the fifth grade choir from Bonnie Grimes Elementary. And we are so happy to be here this evening. And we really appreciate the things that you do for our school. Thank you.
We still understood it. Ms. Reeves, the thing that we'd like to do, too, if you would have the students just come up here and forward so that parents and grandparents can get a picture, and then we can get a picture of the school board behind them. So if you could go forward and kind of fan out. And school board members, if you can stand just a little bit. And then grandparents, parents, if you want to come up where you can get a picture of the podium out of the way there. You'll free that ball. We'll let parents go first. Students, if you'll look forward to your parents, please, so they can get a good picture. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. That was awesome. And as these students are leaving, we also would like to express our appreciation for all the parents and grandparents that brought these students out this evening. Thank you for taking the time to come out and be with us.
For the record, I think these kids are the only ones that have ever come to the podium and said that we were cool. We'll never, we'll never hear that again, so.
We do hear "you, you, you" a lot. Mr. President, at this time, we'd like to ask the Rogers High School Cheerleaders to come forward. So ladies, if you'll come forward. We would like to recognize Ms. Ross and Ms. Carmichael, our coaches for the cheerleading team. And I think what ended up happening with this particular group is they started out the year, as most high school students do who are involved in competition, is that they want to be successful at the state level and be state champions. And ladies, I believe that you were just three tenths of a point away from being that. And so it's extremely an honor to recognize you this evening as a second, or as a runner-up in the state competition. And so we're proud of what you have accomplished, and we're proud of you, your coaches. And so at this point in time, I believe that we have a couple of students that's going to tell us a little bit about what happened at state competition and what you've done to get there.
Yeah, so first.
Tell us your name.
Oh, my name's Natalie Manning, and I'm a senior. We just want to thank y'all first for allowing us to be here tonight and just like all the support that y'all have shown us. And thank you for the coaches and our amazing admin for everything they've done for us. We put in a lot of hard work to get to where we are today, and we're so excited to compete at the national level in Orlando, Florida next month.
Awesome.
So tell us a little bit about that experience at the state level. You get there, you know that the best of the best is there. And so kind of tell us some of the things you went through to prepare for that and some of the excitement, fear, apprehension that you had about being there in front of everybody and knowing that everything comes down to this one moment.
Yeah, so we like practice multiple hours a day. It takes a lot of practice and just a lot of encouragement to get to where we are. We went to a lot of competitions, placed pretty highly in those competitions, got a lot of overall high scores, which is like the highest score in our division. So that was motivation to keep going and just be our best on State Day.
And then I know that there's, it would be impossible to probably identify one single memory that you got out of this entire experience. But what would be one of the highlights and the things that you'll never forget about that experience?
Yeah, my favorite memory this year was probably on State Day when we just went out there and like had fun on the mat and hit our routine. And then just afterwards, we were able to celebrate and celebrate all of our successes.
Coaches, you all want to add anything?
We just want to say thank you so much for inviting us to be here tonight. It's an honor to be recognized and support and by our administration. Thank you, Williams, for being here and supporting us always. These girls were tired this season. They played so many hours. And I think we spent a game on sidelines, and we don't get to see them in the behind seat, but in the real competitive aspect of what truly it is. So being able to go and compete and bringing home those overall titles in multiple competitions this season, and then bringing home that state record by just two points, just shows that if we go back and have a good game, and we can stand our ground, we will be proud of you. And we can't wait to compete in Orlando here next week. So, thank you, guys, again, for having us.
One more big hand for our state runner-up champions. And then everybody just circle around. Coaches, come in with us, please. Ms. Williams, if you'll come forward and be with them. You're an important part of this.
Some of you are hiding back here.
Ladies, thank you so much. We are so proud of you. Okay. It takes a while to, okay, good deal. Thank you, guys, so much for coming out this evening. We also, at this point in time, we do have some state champion winners that we want to recognize. And at this time, we'd like to recognize the chair to come forward and introduce the esports team. So, and again, guys, I think what happens, as I said earlier, everybody starts out the year wanting to win a state championship. And here, we do have four individuals that are state champions, and I believe this is the second or third year in a row.
This is our third season to win state championships in a row.
There you go.
And this is our logo senior of the group. We've got Caesar Mateo Rodriguez right here. We've got Henry Sims. We've got Gaella Teherides right here. And our anchor of the team who won us our championship in the third round, we've got Simon Summer right here. And so this is our A-team of our Smash Esports, Smash Brothers Esports team. So, pretty awesome, pretty awesome group of individuals right here. I will say, when we went to our state competition, it was that interest, right? Yeah. It was that interest. And the Allen's coach, Stephanie, I'm the assistant coach, by the way, and our actual coach, Mr. Godlowski, we had our first practice time with our other sports members. So he didn't want to miss that. So he poured on this opportunity to be in person, request of amazing. But I will say, the thing that they kept coming up and asking is all the state coaches kept going saying, "Come, Steve, come here." And I think it's good to have. We sat, this one, with everybody we knew. It was a good feeling. We put a crowd of individuals represented, not just in UTEC, and just, oh, we're all wonderful. But they had concerts, they played well, but they represented Rogers incredibly well. And it was an absolute honor to just be a part and just be a part of us and come together.
Would any one of you be willing to kind of talk to us a little bit about what esports is? I think that some of us have an understanding, but so, okay. Tell us a little bit about what, what an actual competition would be like, and what do you do and how you prepare for it.
So we play competitive video games. There's eight in our current program. We have Hearthstone, Madden NBA, Super Smash Brothers Ultimate is the one we're here for, there's Splatoon, Mario Kart, and League of Legends. I think I named all of them. And there's also one more, it's Rocket League. So our games vary with competition. Smash Brothers is best two of three. You think of it like rock, paper, scissors, but we actually like strategize and use our heads and kind of plot how we're going to defeat our opponent. We, what we typically do for us is we'll see past gameplay through our enemy teams, YouTube channels or streams, and we'll kind of strategize from there. We'll see, we're going to try and guess how they're going to, their lineup's going to be, since it's me versus one person, him versus another person, and so on and so forth. It's kind of how it is. And we kind of strategize based off of, okay, if I am set to go against someone who is a bit harder for me, and my teammate can handle it, then beforehand, we'll try and change our roster to where our lineup, to where it'll be changed, and we can hopefully get a better win. So it's that critical thinking that we use to get a win. And in the game, it's a man for himself, you know? You've got to fight and see what your opponent's doing and how you're going to counter them in order to win.
Is everything online, or are you sitting there next to the person you're competing with?
Everything is online unless it's our finals, which we'll go and meet up from now on, from what I can tell.
And so we're a little bit older than you guys, as you can imagine. So are there any of the games that we would recognize, or is it beyond our experience?
You may be able to recognize Mario Kart and Super Smash Brothers. The other ones are a bit modern. They came out 2010s and later. But Mario Kart and Super Smash Brothers have been out since the 90s.
All right, good deal. Board members, any questions? All right, so guys, is there anything else? As we asked the, the other group, anything from that particular experience that you would like to share with us that? I know that it's a great feeling to come home with not only one state champion, but the third time. Was there anything else that, that you would see as a highlight of that particular experience?
So another thing is that Rogers New Techology High School doesn't have any other official sport. Like esports is our only like AAA like activity that we can do to represent the school. So knowing that, I think like we have just one sport to represent, and I think that's why like we have such like a desire to like actually like win that one thing that we have to represent our school. Like, because they can't really, our school can't really be represented in any other way, like AAA-wise in like sports. Like you have Heritage and Rogers, or like New Tech, like isn't really talked about, at least in that like scheme of things. So that's like, you know, one of our motivations. I, I'm not sure about them, but I know for me, like that's a motivation that I want to have, is like to actually represent like the one school that's like quote unquote like left out, you know?
So it is a good feeling, I would suspect, to be the only school that could probably say that we've got 100% state champions in our school. So, so every sport that we play in, we're champions in that. So anything else from anyone else?
I'll just say that, you know, with esports, they're representing a group at New Tech where we have, there are eight different games you could pick from. We have 15 teams inside those eight games. So we have a lot of teams, over 50 people, or 50 students are actually involved in the program. Mr. Godlowski has done an incredible job of not just developing the culture inside New Tech for that, but also that winning atmosphere and that not just, we're not just going to sit around and play games, but we're actually going to develop, we're actually going to garner our skills and actually try to hone what this is. We're getting college, colleges coming out and recruiting. This is going to lead to scholarships for many of them. And so it's exciting to be on this end. It's tough when you play games and everybody's like, "Oh, I'm a casual gamer, I like to play." But when you watch them play, you can't even follow along with what they're doing. It's going so fast. And so my old eyes, I'm like, "I don't know what they're doing, but here's, here's a water bottle." And so it's, so it's an actual honor that just, just to watch and be a part of the program because it's something special that we have going on right now at New Tech.
As would you. Come forward and let us get a picture real quick of some state champions here. So, we did last. Guys, we are extremely proud of what you've been able to accomplish. We'll get him up here after he takes a picture. And then Dr. Robert, come on forward and get him. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Congratulations. Very, very proud of you. Mr. President.
That concludes a fun night of presentations, recognitions. We will go back to our agenda, item three, our reports. We'll start with our financial report. Jake?
Good evening. Well, there is definitely a lot to cheer about here tonight, having a cheerleader in the group, but also seeing the esports, three times champions, and Bonnie Grimes. A lot of really good, positive things happening here in Rogers. And when we look at our financials, it's similar. There are a lot of positive things, things we can work on, but there's a lot of positive things. Let's just walk through the first page here. You can see our overall balance, total fund balance is 124 million. When you drop down to our investments, the rates are increasing a little bit. I'm excited for when some of the ones we've had on six-month durations come up for options for new because those interest rates continue to increase. So the one thing that, that really sticks out to me, interest earned year-to-date, $491,000. That's halfway through the year. I would like to think with the increase in interest rates, we're going to get over $1 million through investment of these dollars that we've got for our district, which is a good place to be. We can use that for the building fund, we can use that for different projects we've got going on, and they come in really handy. When we flip over to the next page, again, the thing that I'm really watching is that tax revenue. You can see at this time this year compared to last year, we're a little ahead of where we were at this time last year. That's a great sign, taxpayers are paying. I know there's definitely talk, and we've seen some inflation, but very thankful to be in northwest Arkansas. You heard the Chamber just talk about 200 million in new construction projects in Rogers. Some of those may not be in the Rogers School District, but that is just good growth for our area that we benefit from. Looking down through there, when we get to the expenditures, expenditures right in line with really what we expected. Operating expenses are up just a little bit compared to this time last year. A lot of that's going to go into the classified salaries and the bonuses that we paid out, as well as the as well as the benefits. That's why that's going to be a little bit higher. Debt service is one you can see on there that there's a big difference between this year and last year. Uh, this year, right now, we're at 17% of what our budget was. Last year we were at 77%. So some of that's just going to be the timing of when the checks are cashed. I can tell you that we sent over 11 million to the Bank of Ozark to pay our debt service on a few bonds that we've got with them. So you'll see that next month. But we keep a really close eye on that debt service. That is one that, as you guys know, it's kind of our house mortgage, right? It's our house mortgage that we've got. Uh, very thankful we've got one of the lowest debt service to assess value ratios. But the thing that we do have coming up is when you look at our millage, 41.9, it is the second lowest in Benton County. And when you look at Washington and Benton County, it's the third lowest. So there's some room there with our millage, but there's also some room within our debt service. Uh, one of the things that we've always done and prided ourselves on is every debt we take out, we put on 20 years or less. When we went to the voters in 2017, we asked for an extension out to 2037. So right now we're in 2023. We've got about 14 years left on that debt service. So if the district was to borrow more money before we extend the debt service millage, it would be put on a 14-year amortization. Not a bad thing because you're going to pay less interest, but your principal payments are going to be a little bit steeper. So we'll keep an eye on that as we talk about future projects and different things. I wanted to bring that up because it is something that as we go through these next couple of months and years, we want to put ourselves in a position to extend that debt service so we can still, um, do the projects as they're needed and use the funds that we've got. And, uh, we'll just keep looking at that as we walk through it. Building fund, really right in line, a little under where at this time last year, but those expenses are what we had planned. Very proud of technology. They've been through, uh, quite a bit. You know, with technology, we, we get a lot of hacking, a lot of people infiltrating our firewall. I know Debbie and her team has stayed late and done above and beyond to try and protect our staff. Uh, the, the last thing they need to be doing is logging into emails that are trying to steal their information or make their lives harder. Uh, they got a, they got a full-time job being teachers in our buildings. We look at the overall salaries for the month, 6.4 million is what we paid out. Um, when you drop down to the associated benefits, it's 1.5. You can see the December cares funding recap. We've done pretty well to spend it down. Uh, very fortunate to have 31 million over the last four years to put into our buildings and help our school district and our students come back from the pandemic. Right now we've got about 10 million left and we had talked a little bit last time, the projects we've got using for that is over at Eastside as well as some of the other construction projects and as well as, uh, new HVACs. So putting those dollars to good use. That is about as far as I'll go, uh, just for the sake of time. And if there are any questions or anything that sticks out to you, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Jake? Jake, of one of those, uh, bank funds that we have, it's a money market that's paying 110 basis points. Have we contacted them to see if they're bumped that up? If we can get closer to the other yields, that's another $250,000 a year.
Yes, sir. January 24th at nine o'clock, I have a meeting.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's a significant.
Oh, I'm with you. It, it's there, there, yeah.
Any other questions for Jake? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Report, item 3.2 CTE expansion. Dr. Perry?
Sir, as we have talked about several times now, we have discussed, and I believe Ashley has a slide on that, I believe. But if not, um, we have talked about the CTE expansion at Heritage High School. And with that, we had first of all, talked about just moving forward with, uh, the health clinic and with the medical arts and then the heavy diesel mechanic. And beyond that, then we have talked also about adding that construction trades piece. And so with that, the total budget right now for the career and technical education expansion is about 5.7 million. And somewhere in the neighborhood and, and Charles and I have talked about this over and over, was that it's somewhere in the neighborhood of an additional 800, 900,000 to an additional 1.2 million. And, and because it's so closely integrated, it's hard to actually find that number out. But if we were to add the construction trades, that would bring it up to the 5.7 million. The rationale for that and why we would recommend that particular expansion is that it certainly would meet the local and industry needs, uh, out here right now to find a plumber, a construction worker, HVAC person, mechanical person. All of that is in high demand right now. And we also turn away about 100 or so students from that particular, uh, area. And then it's also would give us some great options for some students. Students love that kind of hands-on experience. It would give them certain credits that would actually be of multiple benefits to them and then also to our community. So as we talk about construction trades, we're basically talking about four different elements. So we would start out with basic constructions, how do we take measure, how to take those measurements, how to frame a wall, to do some of those kinds of things. And it also has an introductory piece into the electrical, into plumbing, and then mechanical, which would include your HVACs. And so with that, we think while we're making this expansion, that probably going ahead and putting the construction trades into that, uh, would be beneficial. Of course, the drawback with that being if we add another million dollars, another 1.2 million into that, then that would be less of the building fund we would have to work with, uh, as we got to Oakdale. But we're going to do that in phases also, but we do feel like this is important to move forward with the, this particular point. So, uh, we do have a, a part that we're going to talk about later in the action items, but just before we get into that, is there any conversation about the rationale for this expansion or anything else that you would like to question?
Do we have instructors to teach these things if we add them?
You know, that's always an issue, uh, because, uh, to get someone that would have that particular skillset, uh, and that would be willing to lead the lucrative side of construction. But yes, had that conversation today with, uh, Mr. Davis and, and Don, and we feel like we can end up in a brand new facility, uh, with that high quality that we would be able to attract someone in. It also appears that this governor is going to be very excited about career and technical education and, and there is conversation about relax and some of the certifications that would be necessary for doing that. So we feel good about that and we'd start the process right now of beginning to look for some folks and, and having somebody in there day one.
Do you have an idea of what the student capacity you might be with this expansion project?
Yes, we would do that. We'd basically double it because we would keep and tell me if I'm incorrect, but we would basically double it because we could end up taking some of the kids into the older section we have right now into the, the part where we are doing, do some of the beginning pieces with that. And then our second, third year, fourth year kind of parts, we would work in a career and technical. So is that a pretty accurate?
Yes, sir. Uh, that is correct. And we are, we are a lot of times at the Career Center. Majority of the classrooms in the Career Center will be blocked. And so they will be two periods, um, versus one. And that is for traveling purposes, purposes from New Tech and from Rogers, but also we want them to have more hands-on experience. And so if you go just with the medical aspect, we're going to double our capacity in the medical, um, classrooms. Currently we are turning away right at about 200 students that are requesting medical that we cannot serve. And then in automotive, which we are looking at the Diesel Bay, um, that is a program we turn around about 200 as well. And so the Diesel or the automotive program, we have currently two teachers, which we would be fine to, to be able to implement the program. Medical would be an additional teacher because we are, we're basically doubling our capacity. And then construction would be an area where we'd want to double our capacity and we would need to add a teacher as well because we could keep our existing classroom, but we would add another classroom. And the ultimate goal is for us to move out of level one programs and to get into level two and level three, which gives them work-based experience.
Increasing the footprint of this, one of my concerns has just been, uh, reducing more parking at Heritage, uh, because they are so landlocked. Um, do we have an idea how many additional parking spaces we're losing?
Yes. I would say that we're often, uh, do our own spaces, like if you're actually getting any, the parking lot, one of the baseball softball fields, then.
I ask Mr. Davis for clarification. The parking's not near the issue as it was prior to opening that new parking lot over by the baseball field. So again, we do have the additional parking there that we would lose. The exact number offhand, I'd have to look it up and look at the drawing, but there is a number, we are losing some parking spaces by extending that to the north, uh, that new construction.
That is correct as well, but also would be difficult. We are trying to create a different parking area for those that participate in the health clinic.
And thank you, Jake. And so, um, and so that with the architect, we're still in the process. We've been meeting and that's part of the design. And I think we have a meeting tomorrow where we can look at the exact number of parking spots, but through their study, we believe we will be okay with the parking.
And the primary rationale of describing all of this is that we want to have the courses that meet two big criteria. First of all, is it what our industry and local businesses need? And then second, is it something that we're turning kids away from right now because we don't have space? And in those two things, these are probably two of the biggest areas that is needed. The medical profession just needs more than we can produce and then also construction trades. And when actually the third one too, with the heavy diesel piece, that is an enormous need in this. And so those three areas, we really feel like that will, you know, compensate for any consequences that we'd have for the loss of parking or the, the money that we would have also for Oakdale. Um, still wouldn't prevent us from doing Oakdale. It may just lengthen out the time as we do the phases, but we would hate to do this now, not include construction trades and then have to go back and do it later. Because right now, if we do it, two of the walls would already be built because they're already sandwiched between. And then while you're doing footers and, and all those kinds of things, it's just, it's easier to do that. So as we move forward, we would recommend that the board, uh, include this with the understanding, the process is going to be somewhere in that neighborhood. We'll have to see when we actually get the votes in. Charles, when would we anticipate actually getting those, those bids in?
It's still months away. I mean, we'd be, we'd be bringing a GMP to the board. I have a, they had a schedule, I just, I don't have it in front of me, but we'll have a date.
It's months away.
Yes.
We are talking about that it would be.
Uh, we would hope to start construction in the summer. So again, it would be April or May, I would, I'm guessing that without having the actual document in front of me, I'm bringing a GMP forward.
And then of course the board would have that opportunity when we see the actual costs about if we're moving forward or not. But this will at least allow us to go ahead and commit the, the amount of money to the actual planning and, and design work.
On the construction trades area, have we had any initial conversations with some of the construction industry around here, feedback on how, what they think about this?
I actually talked with the individuals from NAPHOLs about was there an opportunity that we could maybe even partner with them and do some prefabrication about doing some things inside, uh, our shop and then being able for them to take it out. They're definitely interested. Uh, they just have to work through a lot of things, which we've also talked, uh, to the state about is working on that insurance piece. The insurance is a complicated piece. If we could get that insurance to cover the 16-year-olds and beyond, then we could actually begin to work more with that. But yes, we have had those conversations with some of our folks about partnering and could we actually have students actually completing projects that actually had a real life experience to them. And we do think now with the doors that we have, that was in this particular field, facility with the floor space, it would be very viable for us to be able to create walls, to frame things up, to do headers, to do all those kinds of things and to do simple, simple things. The GMP will be in my hands, May the 11th for your approval at the May board meeting.
Okay. Any other questions, board members?
Any idea how long this project would be in construction?
I want to say January or February is what they were looking at, if I'm not mistaken. But again, without having the exact schedule in front of me, I'm just, I'm scared to get to give an exact date. I want to say it was like a six, eight-month project. I thought that's what they were saying.
We would be able to have kids in there clearly by the next school year in the fall. So it's, it's a pretty aggressive schedule and we'll, I believe I gave you that construction schedule, but if not, I'll go back and pull it up.
It's January. It's, Dan's listening in cyberspace and he's, he's texting me the answer to these questions. So, uh, January is the, uh, tentative completion date. So we don't bring it to you in May and have it completed in January. I thought it was about a six or eight month project.
Even the possibility of getting some kids in there, even second semester of next year. Won't commit to that at this point, but, uh, if things go well, we'd be able to do that potentially.
Point, any concerns that board members have in regards to this? Obviously we're not voting on it tonight, but is there any concern that any of you have on this expansion project?
Okay. We just always want to make sure that we're going in the right direction. So, Mr. President.
All right. Uh, board members, back to our agenda, uh, section four, the consent agenda. We have, uh, in your package, the approval of minutes from the December 20th meeting. Now there's a report on our, uh, annual training hours. There's also a secondary curriculum materials review committee as well as approval of human resources. There was an addendum added this afternoon to the, uh, to the HR report. So any questions or anything? If not, we'll entertain a motion for approval. Second. Motion by Curtis and second by Mitch. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries. All right. We are now to our action items, section five. Item 5.1, Garfield Elementary.
Mr. President, member of the board, we have wrestled with this issue for several years now, and it is always a situation that when we talk about the closure of a school, we know for many individuals, it's extremely emotional piece. And we have met with several times with the staff and then also the steering committee and had a community forum and it's a difficult decision. It's one that I don't think that anybody on this board takes lightly. I don't think anyone here at the central office, including me, uh, feels like there's a Solomon kind of wisdom that you can come up with something that meets everybody's needs in this. It just gets to be sometimes where difficult decisions have to be made for the entire district. And we won't go through all of those reasons again. We've had some conversations about, about financial costs of that, about some difficulties of being able to bring the school up to code and compliance and, and all those kinds of things. And before we make this particular recommendation, uh, we would like to reiterate what we said multiple times. That staff out there is incredible. They do an enormous job. You can see what they do in terms of community events and, and getting folks out. You can see what they do academically. And so any action that the board would take and any recommendation that we make this evening does not discredit any of that. They do a phenomenal job and we appreciate everything that they do and able to accomplish some incredible things. However, with that, we do know that there's also some financial situations and that it gets to be a time that student enrollment and facilities perhaps reach a deciding factor. And, and that's the case with Garfield. So I have shared this with the staff, I've shared it, uh, with the steering committee, uh, that our recommendation would be to give Garfield the remainder of this year and then next school year. Uh, we will keep those particular students together because we do feel like there will be a lot of situations where you've created friendships and that reliance on, on having close acquaintances. And so we will keep those students together. If nothing changes, uh, it appears that the most beneficial, advantageous school would be Tillery. They do have the space there. Uh, we've actually talked to the principal, she's excited if that were to happen, to have those students come in. We also did say, oh, that if there is a particular situation where parents, uh, go to work in another area of the county, that they were to go over to Janie Dar and, and work over there, or if they've got relatives that live in that particular area, we will do everything that we can to allow parents to have that first choice of school. Now we do have some, some limitations, but we know that this will do, so we'll inconvenience parents greatly. So these are going to be our first priority of making sure that we allow. So these are going to be our first priority of making sure that we allow parents to choose their school. If none of that works, then of course, we do have the virtual option. We do know that internet connection out there in the area can be spotted sometimes and may not be the best option for some parents, but it would be an option. And I believe that Mayor and some other folks have some plans about increasing the internet capability out there. The other part that we do think's important with this is that we are going to take care of our staff, so everybody, both certified and classified, would keep and be employed by the Rogers Public School at their current level. And so we would make sure that not only are they employed, but we know that some teachers only want to teach kindergarten. And this would give us, this year and a half would give us that opportunity to actually place people not where we have a need, but actually where they would want to go. And so part of the reason why we're giving a year is to allow parents the opportunity to make some decisions and also to do the celebrations and recognitions that they need to do, but also to give us time that we make sure that we take care of our folks. And that is a big part of what we want to do. And this will give us some time to allow people to pick their school, pick their grade level, some of those kinds of things. Also, we would transfer ownership to the town if the town is interested in that. As we have stated multiple times, there's a state law that we have to offer this up to any charter schools at first. We would go for the 30-day exemption and see if they would approve that. If we do that, we put it up. If anybody wants it, then charter school could purchase it. If not, then we would recommend ownership to the town. We do understand that another thing that we heard from the community was the bus time and the travel time that would be there. We would do everything we can to mitigate bus time. We can't lengthen the distance, but we can do some things to attempt to make that just as quick as we possibly can. And it is important to note, we probably do have some transportation routes now exceeding an hour and a half and some regular routes. So it's not as if we could do everything there, but we do understand that's a problem. And part of our recommendation is that the board would direct superintendent to keep that in mind as we begin to establish routes, to do everything that we can to lessen the amount of time on the bus. We also have talked to the staff, is that we'll still have to have school there for a year and a half. So it's still going to be a situation that we'll maintain the building and make sure that it is orderly and make sure that things are taken care of so that we can have school. Because we do not want the staff to feel as if we've abandoned them or that we don't still have another year and a half left to school. And then we also recommend that the board recommends, or directs superintendent to go back out to the community, hold another community forum and let folks know whatever we made a decision on here this evening. And then to answer any questions that the community may have, and then if there's additional questions that they may have, is that they can bring us to our attention and then we would begin working on that. So, Mr. Chair, it is with a great deal of thought, a great deal of deliberation and with some struggle that we make this particular recommendation you see.
Dr. Perry, questions, comments, and board members?
Dr. Perry, no, I respect the recommendation, but some questions that I may have as well is outside of emotional time, going through the stages of grief or whatever. What would be the disadvantage of expediting that to close at the end of this school year? Where if, you know, one thing was mentioned, his staff could find location elsewhere. If I'm a teacher and I see a position open up next year, that's what I wanted, I could leave then. Now it leaves a teacher being replaced out to the school for one year. What it boils down to, what we've heard for months and months and years, is the inadequacy financially of keeping the school open. And even though I recommend, I mean, I truly understand the recommendation, I have a hard time spending more taxpayer money of $300,000 to $400,000 unless there is other reasons outside of emotional reasons to keep the school board, I mean, to keep the school open when we have all these other projects that we're talking about coming in over what we initially thought. The cost is just escalating and that'd be my question. I mean, outside of the emotional, I get that. But if, if we have room in Tillery next year, if we, you know, it seems like we do a lot of hiring every year of teachers and support staff and whatnot in the district, I don't see those being an issue. So that's just my question to you and the admin team.
And we did talk about that. We had that conversation about potential year and there was some, some agreement with that by some folks about just going ahead and making a decision. But then for us ultimately, I think we can do a better job the more time we have to plan. And it's not just finding a job for a teacher because we can find, we have 50, 60 openings every year. So, but it's can we find that school and that grade placement for that particular teacher? Do parents have enough time to kind of make some decisions and work some things out? So for us, it also is a piece that at Tillery right now, we've got, Charlotte, we've got 40, 50 kids that's probably out of, out of zone right now attending that, that we've allowed to do that. And we would like for those kids to be able to go ahead and move through and a year and a half would give us more time to do that. So if the board chooses to close down this year, we can make it happen. We just feel like it would give us more time. It would allow the community a little bit more time to absorb, because emotion should not be the thing that drives our decision, but it should be a part of what we do. And this is probably the biggest decision the board will make in a community of whether or not a school stays in that community. So we serve its pleasure of the board and we'll do what is asked of us. I do believe though, that this recommendation is probably reflective of the entire leadership team as, as we come together, that a year would give us more time to work with our staff, to also work with moving some of those students out and do some of the work that we would have to do at Tillery, just to make sure that everything would happen. It's not unreasonable what you're asking. I understand that and that was a conversation that, that we did have.
So back to, piggyback on Rob's question on staffing. So if we've got staff that's currently at Garfield Elementary and next year they want to go ahead and transfer to another school.
We anticipate that will happen and we're prepared to do that.
So what happens if we lose a third or half of the staff and they go ahead and go to other schools? Will we have enough to keep the school open for a year and taking care of those kids like we need to have?
I think our job is to take care of kids wherever they are. So if it is a situation, yes, we would have to take care of that. And we don't anticipate a mass exodus, but if we do and it happens, then we'll have to react. So I think that our recommendation is based on current enrollment with us going forward with that. If we see that several people do go ahead and elect to go homeschool, if they elect to go to P VIDS, then I think we reevaluate as we do every year. And I think the thing that we have tried to do in all of this is we have six kindergarten classes at any particular school and if we don't have the enrollment, we drop down to five or we drop down to four. And so, and we move students from one school to another every year. We already do that. When it's a situation, Charlotte, at the first couple of weeks of school is always a difficult time because we've got loaded classes and we've got empty classes and we're shifting kids around. So this is not something that we wouldn't do in all situations. So if we have a second grade that doesn't have very many kids in it, now this would be extreme of course, but we are able to, we're able to react to that. And if we see from the community forum, if I go out or even if we do a survey and folks say that we're not, now that we know that school's closing, we want to, you know, change schools. If we get that information beforehand, then, then we do after our decision.
Questions and comments? This is one of the tougher decisions that this board's ever faced and you can go back, I guess, two other superintendents have talked about this and many boards that were, come before us. And so it's kind of been, been laid on our lap for all these, all these years. And so it's, it's a decision and we've got some of our friends from Garfield are here and so we, we understand it's a concern and it's a close-knit community and it's a neat school. It's, it's an awesome school, but it's, it's a decision that we don't take lighthearted. So I think we just need to, we need to state that as a board. But we must do what's in the best interest of the school district and our, and our taxpayer.
Chair, we need a motion.
Heard a recommendation by our admin team. And that's a unanimous recommendation, I guess, from, from the, from the admin team?
I think that we could say that it's a consensual one. I think that we probably never have unanimous decisions on any particular things and some folks may have wanted to go a little longer, some folks may have wanted to go a little shorter, but as a leadership team, I do feel that was a consensus that we came up with that would best meet the needs of, of everything that we have. With that being said, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation presented.
We have a motion by Rob and a second by Paige to accept the recommendation. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 5.2, 2023-2024 school year calendar.
Mr. President, we've given you all a copy of the calendar. The only reservation we would have about the calendar, there is current conversation at state legislature that they repeal the law requiring that we can't start any earlier right now. There could be a conversation that we would have with you later, that if they were to repeal that law and let us start a week earlier, we might come back and ask to start midweek of next week or that, that previous week and start like on a Wednesday. It's tough for kindergarten students. It's tough for kindergarten teachers. It's tough for all of us to come back from summer vacation and start out all week long, especially for our little ones. They kind of struggle and so sometimes it is better to start on midweek. So, but we don't know if that's going to change or not, but for right now, the recommendation is to adopt the traditional calendar as, as we represented or presented earlier, with the understanding that the state forced us to start on that later date. We would, and if we do start that week earlier, it would be our recommendation, Dr. Hill, unless I represent this wrong, if we did start that week earlier, we would probably add the time on getting out of Christmas or winter break earlier. Correct? If it's more time. So that would be the rationale, start three days earlier and then add that on to winter break. Because the other problem we get on winter break, some folks are going to leave regardless of when we say that we're going to have school. And it helps to have a little bit longer break at the winter. So, Mr. President, right now, our recommendation is the calendar as presented.
Any questions, board members? If not, we'll entertain a motion approved. A motion by Curtis, second by Mitch. For approval, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 5.3, approval of proposed 2024-2025 budget. Jake? You're up again, sir.
It's an honor to be up again. What you guys see before you in 2024 and 2025 is a compliance document. The state in their infinite wisdom likes to roll these out throughout the year. This is another one of those compliance documents for us to approve. You can see the budget that's laid out, the categories there, the salary fund as well as instructional expenses. We do have a little bit of building fund expense, about 15, five that I've got in there as we look to the 24, 25 school year, thinking of Oakdale. I will tell you, when you look at the $80 million, $900,000, that's got a little bit of an increase for our teachers in there so that we increase those salaries. And through hard decisions, those funds do become more readily available to help our, our staff as well as our facilities across the district. So in this compliance document, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, board members, on the presentation?
This is the best estimate at this point.
Hundred percent.
We're not locked into teacher salaries.
We are not, no sir. Yeah, we, we definitely, the, the state, for, for whatever reasons, when we produce and put these in the paper, it's good to let our patrons know some expectation, but we're not held in any way to what this funding actually looks like. And I'll tell you the reason why too, is they, we're just coming off of two years where the state approved the biennium allocations per pupil. So right now, the legislators just met, we're waiting for them to bring bills in to see what that new allotment per pupil's going to be. So I feel comfortable that we're going to get a little bit more money, but when you look at our student count, it's relatively flat. So how is that exactly going to affect this in 24, 25? If, if it's 100% accurate, it'll be probably the 10th or 15th time I've, I beat Bentonville with having correct numbers, so I'm very proud of that.
For the record.
For the record. Yeah, state chairman.
All right. Any questions for Jake on this report that goes to the state? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 5.4, Oakdale Middle School remodel project. Is this one of Mr. Lee?
It is. Mr. Lee, do you want to address this particular one? As we move forward with this, we do feel like the board has directed us to move forward. As always, we'd like to make sure that we are going in the right direction and so Mr. Lee will formalize that process.
Yes, they, we are recommending that we utilize Hyatt Jackson's architect and Flintco as our construction management company on the Oakdale remodel project so they can begin developing the scope of work and design on that. Flintco was originally given elementary number 17 and since we pulled off that, they're not working on any of our projects currently. We've had a longstanding partnership with them. They built the baseball softball complex at Rogers High School, the arena, basketball arena there, they built DAR, they built Fairview. They've done a lot of great work for us. So that is our recommendation is that as we move forward and get in preparation for the remodel at Oakdale, that they help us, those two companies help us design the development of the project and the scope of work to be done in the budgeting process so that we can bring that back to you as we develop that, the scope of work on that project.
Questions, board members?
So has Flintco done any remodels? They've just done new construction?
They haven't for us. They've done some, but not for us. They're, I mean, they, they have experience with it, yes.
That would be my answer.
Yes. Had conversations about that very thing recently. So that was a question that I had as well, but yes, they've done remodels, new construction, they've done a lot of different work in construction area.
Has Hyatt Jackson chosen the lead on our project yet for that?
Well, Michelle, Michelle, yeah, any, Michelle, the only thing she does at schools and that's, she's thorough with that and she would be the lead on the project, yes. Actually, I met with Michelle yesterday looking at the performing arts centers, the scope of work and we'll be bringing that to you shortly as well. It's not on the agenda, but I'm just saying, I met with her. It's not on the agenda, but I'm just saying, I met with her, and this kind of came as part of the conversation as well, some of the work that's going to be doing on this one as well, if approved tonight.
Any other questions for Charles, comments?
Approved.
Motion approved by Mitch, a second by Paige. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Carries. All right, item 5.5, Guidelines for the Community Use of District Facilities.
Yes, we put a committee together to revisit this policy. You'll see the two significant changes, or there's a couple additions and then significant changes. If you'll scroll right there, hold it there, Ashley, on number 15 and 16. When we were reviewing other districts, neighboring districts, facility use agreements, we noticed these two statements appeared in their policies, and we we kind of support that as well so that it's, you can't sublease it, if you rent it out, you can't sublease it to somebody else. And secondly, that you're assuming responsibility for all the activity involves people in the building regardless of their age. So if a child, parent brings their children in, they rented it, and they destroyed the property, then they're responsible for that. So though, we found that in several other policies in our neighboring district. If you'll scroll down, Ashley, the next thing that we did was we took out the Lowell baseball field. We no longer have Lowell baseball field, so we were just deleting that from our facility use agreement in there. The the bottom part was the change. Anytime you have policy in two different places, what ends up happening, you end up conflicting one another. So what we did was we cleaned it up so that we would never have to worry about having a conflict there. So we just took out all those fees and and paid for the facilities, for the, actually for the help, because it references in our salary schedule as well. So we make reference, see the salary schedule plus 25%. We say, well, why 25%? That is actually less amount than what the pay would be. So if you did the 30 times 3 for 3 hours, 90, and multiply that times times 25%, that's less than $25, it's 22 something. So it's actually less money on the pay side that they're paying for the facility than you had, or for the worker, but you also have to pay an hourly rate for those workers, and it references, it takes it back to the salary schedule. That's why we put that in there and worded it that way. They haven't, this policy hadn't been reviewed in in several years.
Does each school that deals with this do it themselves, or does it go to a centralized?
Any request for Phil's facility use goes to Dan, to the school services. They had, it has to be a facility use agreement, and then Dan, if there's questions about it, then we put together a committee to review any special requests that they may have.
By this, by this policy, I don't see any outdoor fields, so baseball, softball, we don't.
We currently do not rent. Anything that we, that those facilities are used, a, is usually as a fundraiser for an activity fund for one of the sports teams. They use it like for the summer. I saw Mr. Kilgore in here earlier, he's gone. We have our baseball coaches that host a tournament in the summer, it's a summer league tournament. And again, they, but it is run by Rogers High School baseball team. And so they're, they're not paying rent on the facility, they're using it as a fundraiser for their activity funds. But outside, if there's an organization, like there's a lot of summer baseball leagues, but we do not rent it out to them for practice purposes or play purposes.
Make a motion to adopt the use of district facilities guideline.
Second.
By Rob and second by Mitch, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Charles.
We've got one more.
Item 5.6, Policy EH Service Animals in District Facilities.
Yeah, we have never had a policy on this, and some of our neighboring districts do. We've had several questions about, we've actually had student interns who have had to have a service animal with them. Should have had to have a service animal, and by federal law, you cannot deny that. But we never had a policy that specifically addressed that. We always relied on the federal law or state statute to do that. And we had conversations with, obviously, Mr. Matthews, anytime we had a situation like that come up. So what this does, it puts it there in policy as to what a service animal is, how they're allowed, what questions are allowed to be asked. By federal law, you can't say, you can't bring your service animal because it's performing a specific task for an individual with a disability or a medical condition. So again, it's just, we're putting wording in policy that's based on state statute and federal law. We introduced it last month as a first reading.
Mr. Lee, just distinguish between a service animal and a sympathy animal?
Yeah, there's, there's a difference between a service animal and a therapy animal, or a emotional support animal. We do not, in policy, it states there, is it on the next page? Ashley, could you show? It's somewhere in there, I'm sorry. I, the difference is this, there's a difference between the service and a therapy animal. Therapy animals are not allowed. A service animal has been trained to provide a specific task for an individual. For example, I'll use diabetes as an example, that was one of the last ones that I had to deal with. We had a student intern who had diabetes, and the dog could sense when the blood sugar was getting low or getting too high, and it would alert the individual of a situation on the blood. Obviously, we have vision impaired students who've had animals before. So there's all sorts of service animals out there, but that provides a specific task for an individual. A therapy animal is just someone to help someone maybe cope or feel but feel better. But there's not anything in IDEA that, or federal law, that requires that. Service animals, you, you, they are allowed, you can't prohibit them, I guess is my point. Therapy animals, you can, and currently, we do not allow those animals in our buildings.
See your question. Do we have to have free readings of this, or can we pass on the first reading? Last, it was in our practice.
So it would be. No, things just one.
So we have all three. Getting the governments mixed up.
Thought that was correct, but I made mistakes lately.
All right, any other questions for Charles? On the state policy?
Second.
Motion by Curtis, a second by Rob. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Thank you, Charles. We are entering into the public comment section of our board meeting. Just kind of want to go over some longstanding protocol we've had in the district on on our public comments. This time, district patrons are given the opportunity to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. So I know we have several folks from the Garfield community. We'll be glad to visit with you after the meeting tonight, Mayor, so thank you for for being here. So if we have any citizens who want to come, tonight, we'll allow individuals up to three minutes. If you're speaking just for yourself, and if you're speaking for an organization, up to five minutes. The board will listen to the patrons' comments, but by practice, does not respond to them during the meeting in which the presentation is made. The board may choose to discuss the issue at a later meeting, but is not, under no obligation to do so. So do we have any public comments for tonight's meeting? I'm not seeing none. Section 7, Superintendent's Comments, Dr. Perry?
Ashley, if you'll bring up the slide, please. Couple things for superintendent's comments, Ashley, if you had advance. So we are excited about having the state basketball tournament here, that'll be February 28 through March 4. Will be held at Rogers High Schools, and the games will begin at 4 o'clock PM. So I think it's a great opportunity to showcase our facilities and showcase Rogers. Anytime that you can hold a state event, it's a big, it's a big deal. However, it does create some logistical issues. Forest traffic is going to be probably a problem right at the be, at the end of school. And so one of the things that we'll have to do, and we've talked to the administration about this, is to release Rogers High School at 3 o'clock. Now, what will happen with that is that buses will run on the same time. So if you drive, you'll be able to just give in your car and leave at 3. If you're riding a bus, then we will hold you in a particular area. The buses come in in a different direction because we've got buses that work together with other schools, so we couldn't run two routes. And so we will dismiss the students at 3 o'clock. The other high schools will remain on their same schedule, so. But if it is a child that comes from Heritage to Rogers, and they're taking their last classes there, of course, they'll get out at 3 o'clock. If they've got their own vehicle, then they'll drive, if they're riding a bus, then of course, they're riding the bus. This will not impact instructional time, Mr. Davis has worked with the administration to make sure that we have the same amount of time. Instructionally, what we'll do is we'll just take 30 minutes off of the remediation time so the classrooms will not be impacted by that. So unless we hear any objections for the board, we'll be proud to host the state basketball tournament, and we will follow those issues to just get as many of our students out of the parking lot so we have both the space and we're not tied up with the traffic congestion at that same point in time. Even though we do anticipate some folks will get here early, and there will be some intermingling of traffic there, but we'll have additional law enforcement to kind of help with that and get some folks out to direct traffic. Any questions about that one?
Just at our age yet.
Just then. Right, it's just in our age yet.
Paige, do you have all the concessions staff for those that week? It's not you?
It was, it was responsible for that, and they probably need help, so.
Because just to make sure that the board is aware, we have approximately 40 physicians that are currently funded by our ESSR money, which is going away at the end of this school year. And so we are currently working on, or have actually been working on, a staff management plan to make sure that all those individuals we take care of. And so when we hired these people originally, we told them it would be temporary positions. We we made sure that they knew that that had a shelf life to it, that there would be an end to that. So if you look at number four here, we have about 40 physicians. 16 of those would be certified staff, 17 would be aides, which are predominantly in the elementary schools, five tutors, and then two social workers. Now, those physicians, the funding for that will end at the end of this school year. And so we are making an attempt to reassign all of those staff positions, the certified staff, of course. We have a lot of openings in that area, and we feel really comfortable and are are committed to making sure that those individuals have a job. The aides would be, we do think there'd actually be an opening for that, but it may not be in a particular, you know, situation that if you were in a preschool situation, it may not necessarily have a preschool situation. It may be in a special ed position, or it may be in another school. So we are trying to work with that, can't necessarily guarantee every single one of those positions, but we would like to take care of the people who have served us and have been faithful to us. In most of these situations, we would have the opportunity, it just might not be in the opportunity that you would necessarily like. But we are right now talking to folks that if there is a position that were to come open, and and we had probably, Dr. Hill, three or four positions that just came open recently. And so we're trying to make folks aware of that, that if there's something that that you want, that is your niche, that you really enjoy, it's better now to take that position and look at that as opposed to waiting than having to take something that might not be your first choice. There is also a conversation that right now, some of those positions have just become critical. I think if you were to ask any elementary principal right now, those aides have just been essential almost in terms of helping with some of our students who are distributing some of those behavior kind of issues. And so we're looking for some other funds, maybe through the title funds and other federal funds to help pay for some of those positions. But again, we don't know all of the details of all of our federal funding right now, so we can't commit to that. But we are committed to making sure that our folks have the staff that they need, not staff that they want, but staff that they need to be successful. So we just wanted to let the board know as we began to come to that particular process. Jake, am I correct on the numbers, 1.8 million or so? 1.8 million that we would have to come up with? And of course, you know that if we were to have to come up with that, of the general funds, and that's less money that we can pay for raises and would compromise what we could do for some of our other classified folks. And so this should be no surprise to anyone. And, but I do know that people do have short memories, and and when they're doing a good job, they just can't understand why that job won't continue. But it's just a matter of that those positions temporary. So just let the board know that we are working on folks right now so that we don't get to the end of the year and then have a crisis situation of that we're having to replace folks. But traditionally, it's not been a problem for us to to place those positions. The biggest problem that I can see is this would not be my first choice. I would rather work in preschool as go into special ed classroom or something of that nature. But we'll do everything that we can to help everyone.
Does that 1.8 million include benefits, or is that just salaries? Full packet, okay.
Close to $2 million, and that's just something that we could not, we could not absorb and still keep our competitive salaries. And every district in the nation is doing this right now. So, but again, we just want to make sure the board was aware. Next thing was school health clinics, I know we talked about this, but we we had this particular question from a staff member, and want to make sure that the board was aware of it, too. So you know that we're going to open up a school health clinic here soon. We're working with Northwest to do that. And we wanted everybody to know that it's no cost to the district. So we are not paying for the practitioners that would work, we're not paying for the nurses, we're not paying for the administrative assistants. This would all be provided by Northwest. We get the convenience, they get the potential volume of some additional traffic coming to Northwest. And so it's a piece that I did not want the board to think, nor did I want our community or staff to think that we're adding additional staff to the payroll. This is not one to cost us anything, with the exception of the space. And even with that, traditionally, when we get to the MOU, there's a rental agreement for the use of the space. And so it would be a situation in which it's a cost neutral benefit to us, but we get a ton of positive benefits out of it. And then we also think Northwest benefits, too. So any questions about that one? The biggest thing is that there's just no cost to the district, we're not hiring these individuals. Also, you've probably heard in the paper and with several emails, there's several executive orders that the governor issued. I think she actually issued seven in all. Four of those have a direct impact on schools. The first one is the Executive Order 23-05, that prohibited the instruction or teaching of critical race theory in any public school. And made it real clear, as we have several times, we do not teach critical race theory. Our curriculum does not contain that material, nor do we produce material for critical race theory. But now the governor has set forth that in the executive order. The other one that she did was Executive Order 23-06, which actually provides security from four nations. Mainly what she was talking about in that one is the reliance on some products and some technology from China, especially. And she specifically mentioned TikTok, which is commonly viewed as, as most people, as potentially a spyware kind of attempt to gain data from Americans or any other nations who use that. So TikTok has to be eliminated off of any public device. Currently, our filtering system prohibits that, so we do not have TikTok or should not have TikTok on any of our devices that we send out or that we sponsor. The third thing was Executive Order 7, which was prohibition of certain Hispanic terms that that most of us kind of understand as an attempt to do away with non-binary labeling. So not 100% sure on the nature and the extent of that, but she did want certain terms eliminated from any public documents. And Latinx is the normal one that comes up the most frequent. But that is such a small, small insignificant part, but it is an executive order. And so there is now a search to see if any of that terminology is in any of the public documents, but we don't feel like it is an issue. The fourth one will impact us significantly, and that is one and you will need to become familiar with this particular acronym, Learns. The L stands for literacy, the E is empowerment, accountability, readiness, networking, and school safety. Much of this, we agree wholeheartedly with, talking about literacy, about making sure that students are able to read before the end of third grade, putting an emphasis end of third grade, putting an emphasis on early childhood development, very, very supportive of that, about preschool opportunities, about daycare opportunities. Empowerment is talking about parental empowerment, making sure that parents have a greater say in the educational aspects of their children. The accountability piece, we're not really sure what that means yet, but there will be a deeper accountability of making sure that we perform at certain levels and we assume that that will come with certain consequences if we fail to do so. The readiness piece again is making sure that students are ready for third grade to read. That networking piece is making sure that we have access to broadband internet service and then school safety, making sure that schools are as safe as it can be. So the executive orders was an ambitious week for the governor and did a lot of different things to set the tone coming in and a lot of things we're excited about. As Jake mentioned, there does seem to be, is going to be a tremendous increase to the public school budget. However, it may come in with a one big legislative package with a lot of things included in that. Don't know if that's going to be the case, but that is some of the information that we're hearing is that the charters, if those are in there, the vouchers will be in there, the public school funding will be in there, the literacy, all of those kind of things will be in one massive deal. So you would be for the entire thing or against the entire thing? That's the way that it's ended up being, but we are having some conversations and trying to find out what all this legislation will be so that we can have some conversations. We have been in conversation with some of our local legislators to let them know our feelings about certain things. So hopefully that will have some impact when things actually get on the floor for deliberation. But it's in the preliminary stages and we may know less about this than we do know about them, but any questions or comments about the executive orders and the Learns mission? Just quick updates, currently Charles is working with the city of Law to do an MOU. We talked to you about that school resource officers would come into the school and complete paperwork during the day. While they're in there, there may be a situation where there's a need for law enforcement and they will, they will engage if that is the case. The Arkansas Center of School Safety has a model MOU and so we're just going to use that MOU and talking with the city of Law to agree to that. And then we'll bring that back to the board next month for the board to execute because we do have to have an MOU if they're going to do certain things. It'd be very similar to what we're doing now, it'd just be an updated MOU that the the center is recommending. We are having conversations with Boys and Girls Club. They are actually working on a Twenty First Century grant, maybe actually provide some additional childcare at some of our schools, which may go up until six o'clock. And so we're excited about that particular opportunity. If you've not completed your statement of financial interest, make sure you remember to do that before January thirty-first and turn that in. We have mentioned this a couple of times, but always we we want to keep our community that may be watching our meetings digitally. We are having some conversations with the virtual education and this is nothing more than enrollment. And as I mentioned earlier, if we have a particular school and we have six kindergarteners and we end up dropping enrollment kindergarteners, we drop a teacher from that and send them someplace else. Our enrollment right now in a virtual education is a little bit lower, so we will make some changes to our virtual education. We have no intention of doing away with that entirely, but just the current staff that we have with that right now, which I believe that we have twelve staff members, teachers and Roger, you can correct me if I'm wrong, twelve staff members and two administrators, even though currently they are doing some additional duties, we have some staff members that are helping with some overloads at both secondary and the elementary level. And our administrators are also doing extra duty. But a virtual education for a little bit under maybe three hundred students or so, it would not warrant that number of staff members, so we're making some changes with that. And then we are talking with our principals constantly about academic progress and making sure that we are making adequate progress. And one of the things that we'll do tomorrow is we have our administrators, our building level administrators coming in and we're just doing kind of a state of the union check about where we are academically and seeing if there's anything that we need to do different to determine progress, to see if we're making adequate progress and to see if we need to divert additional resources so that we make some decisions before the end of school that we're not just looking at results at the end of school and then being frustrated that we didn't make progress. Because with our benchmark assessments, we can see some some issues that's happening right now and then try to make a change to the course of action so that we can better meet the needs of our students and staff. So, Mr. President, that's all that we have and we'll turn it back over to you.
Dr. Perry? Works, section nine, feature action items. We've got a couple, couple of items for the February board meeting. We'll go over the renewal of general liability insurance coverage as well as that school resource officer MOU with the city blow that you just referenced. So that is only two items that we have. Are there any other items that board members would like to add to the agenda for February? Okay, hearing none. Announcements, next month, the board meeting will be five PM, February twenty-first. And now at this time, the board is going to enter into executive session to discuss the evaluation and contract renewal of our superintendents. We will then return to the regular meeting at the conclusion of the executive session.
Mr. President, before we enter executive session, is it my understanding that we're not going to take any official action because we do have to record things and we'd like to send individuals home? But if you are going to take, I'll get Jason to make sure that I know how to turn the recording on when we come back from the session. If not, we can do it at our next meeting. So what is the closure of the board? It does have to be recorded because there was a school district that forgot to record and somebody contested that.
Definitely want to be live when that, when that time comes. So we can press it next, next month, February meeting or?
Close our meeting after executive session?
So just for our, our press and anyone else that is here, when we come back out of executive session, then there'll be no official action taken, we'll just adjourn the meeting and then any feedback that you have for the superintendent or any other things, we'll bring that up in February. And then that does allow some of our folks who are out multiple evenings to be able to go home and and to relax. So, so at this time, Mr. Chair?